But it takes away the liability off the association. They'll be working for a company and what the company has to offer them, which here they're not getting any benefits or they're not getting anything at all in there. So they would be under that independent company. So that would save the association money. It would take off the liability off the association and the company then they would work for a company. That would be working for the association.
Are there people that are going to still stay on?
Wait a minute, hold on a second.
They will answer to the company because...
Just Nancy for right now because we don't have a motion on the table yet. So it's just questions from the board right now before we make a motion. And then after the board has a motion on the table, then I can help them choose the membership. But right now, we don't have a motion. What Rabbit suggested was that the company come back to us with a contract that's more along the lines of what the attorney wants. But the attorney didn't lay out exactly what changes are desired. Okay, so that would be a challenge for them to come up with something that's along with what the attorney wants if the attorney hasn't spelled out these. So what the attorney was proposing was that the attorney come back with a revised contract. And then at that point, of course, if O S is not comfortable with the changes, then there would be no contract. But what the motion that she's suggesting is, is that we let her revise the contract according to what she feels is appropriate. And then at that point, once we get her approval, it would be an approved contract as long as, of course, as O S Security Company agrees to those changes. Because otherwise, Rabbit, it's not going to be possible, I don't think, for the company to make all the changes that she wants because she hasn't spelled them out. Let me see what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Right, exactly. So I guess then what you would prefer is that she come back to us with a revised contract, don't approve it, let her make the changes, and then present that to them and say, "Are you okay with this?" And if they say, "Okay," then we vote or how would you want it? You're more comfortable with that? You're just not comfortable voting in the affirmative without seeing the final? Okay, I see what you're saying. Okay. So the motion that Rabbit is making, and there's a second, is to not approve the contract right now, to send it to the attorney to revise, then come back to O S Security. And if they're okay with it, then have a vote of the board because nothing is approved until the board finally goes. I believe that's what Rabbit is suggesting. Is that correct? Okay, so that's your motion?
Yes.
And is there a second? Okay, so Marat seconded it. Any discussion on the board before I open it to Bob? Bob?
Okay, I don't want to have to wait a full month to actually implement the contract. I'm sure Elaine can do her job very quickly. And O S Security, I'm sure we can come to an agreement very quickly. And I hate like heck to lose the savings that we could otherwise be enjoying. So, you know, if we could do it on a subject-to basis as Elaine had recommended, I certainly think we'd be in better shape. And it would be to our benefit.
Okay, yes. Maris?
If you get this new company, would they bring in their own security? Or can we keep like, we have...
That's a question for you.
We have people at the desk, Natasha and Christine, who have been here many years and they have quite a confidence as far as taking, you know, the front desk. There's other people on security, so I'm just curious on what can we do?
Yes ma'am, as discussed in the meeting, we will go through a full interview.
I don't think it's...
Hello?
Okay.
As discussed in the previous meeting, we'll take on interviews for all employees that are currently located on the property. We'll go through background check, we'll see if they're eligible, they have the proper licenses, and then we'll go from there. So yes, every employee that's on the property is eligible to remain on the property. I think it's a win-win if there's a guard or a security officer on the property, knowledgeable of the property, works efficiently, effectively. I think it's a win to bring them on board, he's familiar with the property. I think it would allow for us to move in a good direction throughout the transition.
Right, that'll be perfect. Here behind me.
Right, and I would just add to that that I believe the board should be kept in the loop because perhaps the board has more insight into some of the employees that perhaps the company would not necessarily be privy to, you know, their person, their personality, their friendly style, or what have you, those intangibles. So what I would probably suggest as a procedure that would be, that would apply here would be that, yes, the company goes and interviews everybody and then comes up with whatever their recommendations are. Okay, these people should go, these are the people we want to hire. And then take that to the board in a closed meeting, personal matter, and say, "Okay, well, I see this person you're recommending to let go, but here's what's good about that person, I want you to reconsider that one." So it's not completely like out of the hands of the board.
How long is this company in business?
That's for him.
Five years.
How many?
Nine.
Nine years. And you're bonded with, all the securities are bonded?
Yes.
You're bonded.
Okay, so anyway. Another question, I'm sorry, yes?
Who's going to be responsible for the guards that you keep? All the shifts, who's going to be responsible for their actions? Make sure they're doing their job?
I'll be your project manager. So you'll see my face a lot, and I'll also have shift supervisors. We'll try to carry out with that chain of command in regards to who's overseeing who. So we'll put some people definitely in positions of overcharge, for sure.
In our area, what community you know? What community you all can get in our area?
Well, we're from West Palm to Sunrise. The closest one we're at right now in Sunrise is Villas de Valencia. We've been there approximately five years. That's our home, McNabb. So that's the closest. I'm not familiar with the area too much, so I don't know how far it is from there, but that's the closest.
Is it a large area?
Yeah.
From West Palm Beach to Sunrise?
No, 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 the bill is... How many properties, how many in the property?
About 450 units. So this one's double.
This is double, this is double.
Yep.
You have enough security guards if somebody's sick, you have enough people?
We plan on it. As we attack the property, we'll put all those things in line, make sure that we have it covered.
You have examples today here working, 10 people. You have three sick or not coming, you have enough people to bring in here to this?
If blessed with the opportunity to come here, we would definitely have that in order. It's a process, but I plan on having more than enough. If that means I have to put on a shirt myself and work the property, then I'll be here.
I want to share with you something super important. I talked to Nancy about it, she said you guys love this. We own a scanner for the front gate to scan those driver's licenses so we can keep track of who's coming in. But we can't get it working at times. That's what I was told, why it's sitting in a drawer. I'm counting on you to have the expertise to get that working because right now the guards wait everybody through, not because they're bad guards, but because they don't have anything to work with. If they can keep track of who's coming with, they don't sit there right down everybody's license. They can swipe that. Now they got something to work with and they can say, "Let's have your license." "How come, oh, so I see you live here. How come you don't have a barcode?" "Well, I own money in the office." "Well, you best go straighten that out, your car's getting towed."
Right. We spoke in the meeting in regards to different ideas for access control as long as, how do we say, illegal residents who aren't registered with the association. We spoke about those ideas and those are ideas that I will toss back to the board and see what we can do to implement what we're trying to do regarding access control at the gate. So those are ideas.
How about walking?
Pedestrians, that's something we have to attack as well. We don't know where they're coming from, that should be agreed as well. So it's something that we would implement at the gate.
The physical layout of the gate makes it very hard.
Correct.
Okay, anyway, Rabbit, you heard what Bob said. Bob, you said that, well, you've analyzed this, I believe, in terms of savings. You said you would not want to delay the savings. What did your calculate, what in your calculation were the savings?
Well, outside of like workers' comp and all of that, you know, the key is we're getting the exact same coverages that we currently have in place now for a lot less money. And one of the reasons why it's a lot less money is that we don't have to pay for a supervisor. We won't have a Mario or an Austin. Instead, we have this gentleman here. Now, he won't be on site eight hours a day, but he's there as the supervisor, as the manager. So, you know, the contract, you know, we're saving at least $50,000 a year just on, you know, between doing it internally and using O S Security.
It's about $4,000 a month, is what you're saying? About $4,000?
Yeah, sorry.
So you essentially...
Around $4,000 a month.
So what your concern is you don't want to forego that potential $4,000 savings by having to wait a month until next payment?
I'll take every penny we can get as soon as we can get it.
There are questions down here. He won't be on site, so who will be here on site to supervise this man?
Well, then you'd like to shift supervisors or something like that.
That's what he was just saying, that he's going to have supervisors on there. It's a chain of command.
So Rabbit, it was your motion, but you heard Bob said, according to his calculation, it would be $4,000 savings per month. And he would like to see it implemented as soon as possible. So what Elaine's original recommendation was is to approve it, subject to her review, making the changes that she must make, and then sending it back to the company for their agreement and signature as well. And that may save a few weeks. Instead of waiting until the next meeting in November?
Yeah, I would like to see that happen before the next meeting, but I also want Elaine to be happy and agree. And if I understand, we're going to...
They're going to save money insurance-wise too, so I don't know if Bob looked into that part of it.
I didn't even factor that in, I was just happy about the other thing.
Yes, talking to Alan.
I did, I spoke to John.
Yeah, so, yeah, we got to implement it as soon as possible, but I want her comfortable with.
But I mean, like, are you comfortable in your motion and in the formulation that she had of approving? Yeah, I'll just read it again with what she originally suggested as a motion. So the motion that she suggested was to move to award the association's security services to O S Security Company and further move to authorize the president to execute an agreement with O S Security Company upon satisfactory terms by the association's legal counsel. Okay, so you're okay with that? Marat, are you okay with that change?
Yeah, yeah, I'm okay with the change.
Okay.
But, you know, I remember I was going to some...
Then ask your question, Bob. Can you save the $50,000 a year, like $4,000 a month? Have you done, sorry for asking for that, but have you done the calculation or estimating or your hoping?
Well, no, that's the wage or salary that we don't have to pay anymore, like the Austin or the Mario, that's really what it is. So we're paying for the services of the gatehouse, the clubhouse, and a robe. And 24/7, gatehouse, clubhouse, so...
Yeah, same exact, right?
Yeah, so the savings are really that one employee.
All right, okay.
So Bob, you didn't find any additional charges that the company is adding on?
Well, no, we are paying though, we're paying them $15 an hour versus whether it was 13 or 10, 50, or... Because they've got to make some money too, right? So that's been all factored in to the, you know, the overall calculation. And the reality is we're saving good money. And most of it is because we don't have to have that manager on site.
Right, Nancy, I think you touched on this earlier. So right now, the guards are, are they under condominium concepts? Or they're just under the association kind of like work right now?
They're under the association.
Right, okay, so we have a motion and we have a second on the table. Any other questions from the membership? Yes, Sandy?
There used to be a time when you were with a computer in the gatehouse, where you had guests, like your son, daughter, mother, father. And they were the only ones who could use it. Why don't we have a cat, why don't we have computerized? My son went to work, I come to the gate, the dog comes out, which gets my license. He looks in the computer, he tells me, "You're going to see Greg so-and-so, so-and-so. Your name is on the permanent visitors list. Have a good day." How come we don't have that?
Yeah, is that something we can do?
I have two or four people on the...
I'm assuming that's going to be... I assume there would be a charge for that, like...
Well, we'll sit down and meet.
I mean, to set it up?
Yes, there's going to be a settlement. I mean, just to make sure they have the proper equipment ready to go. It should be just a one-time agreement.
What are we going to do with the people that come in every single day, same time, same people, same apartment? They come in every day without a barcode, do you think?
Would that be taken care of as well?
I don't understand why everyone calls it without a barcode in the case. I don't get that. Why do you not have a barcode on if you live here? Because you don't want to take $10 to the exit.
One final question, yes?
They should be required to have a barcode.
Well, more of a answer, we have a top system. Basically, residents can call to the office and, for example, you have Shai come into your unit and want her as your permanent person that comes in. So if Shai comes to the gate...
No side conversations, second here.
If Shai comes to the gate, for example, for Marion's unit, I don't, they don't have to call Marion, I'm a permanent guest. So there is a system for that. You just have to call the office and it can be added. So they'll be on the list as a visitor list. And I think it takes up to three or four names maximum. It stays on there until you're done with it. About four or five names and it stays on there until you want that person.
Well, since when did that start?
That's been there always. For, like, example, caretakers. Caretakers are put on the system.
Okay, okay, we can have back and forth conversation.
No.
When is that started?
I have a comment.
Yeah, yeah, Nancy?
This is the situation. If you start opening the door to guests that are coming in every day, this sounds like unauthorized. People that are living here and they're unauthorized, we don't know about it. So this needs, you need to be sure that if you decide on something like this, you're opening the door for unauthorized personnel that is going to be coming in here. And they're probably living in here and you're not going to know about it.
Hello, hello, let's start all over. I've been doing sales and lists for the last five years. And that is the first time I hear that there's a list of people coming in whenever they want.
It's more for caretakers.
Okay, that list was only for caretakers. Not for mommy and daddy and uncle and aunt and anybody they want.
Every day, the same one.
And it was only from nine to three.
And getting away with not getting a background.
It was only for nine to three.
Getting away with not paying a background check fee because there's something, a high...
It wasn't for everybody and everybody.
Something wrong.
Everybody's confused because it's more for a caretaker or if there's going to be a nurse or if there's going to be a realtor or a property manager. Not, "Oh, my mom is coming every day."
Not everybody in the... I don't know where, Shai, Shai, I don't know where you got this idea that it's everybody and their mother, but it's not supposed to be everybody.
Okay, how about this? We're a little bit off topic, but what I would suggest is maybe, maybe once this is... Excuse me, guys, please, everybody, everybody, please, we need an order. Okay, we need an order, all right. Once, if Elaine comes back with the changes and the company is okay with the changes and the company is in place, what I would suggest is please, if you could get with the sales and lease committee because they seem to have some concerns of their own, and work something out and let the board know what...
We just have too many people coming in that inside gate with no barcode.
Like I said, if you could meet with them, once this is approved and once Elaine comes back, right? But we do have to move on, okay? So let's, okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any objection? Hearing none, it's approved. We'll send that to Elaine. And thank you, Thomas, okay, appreciate it. You can say if you'd like. Good, thank you. Next item is the treasures report. Bob, if you come up to the lecture and hopefully that mic works.
Good evening. I'm Bob, you know, I guess, and I'm running for city commissioner. I always wanted to be called the commission.
Why didn't you tell me?
About two minutes.
Oh, yeah. I need a few more than two minutes. I'd like to take more than two minutes to go over the financial statements for the end of September. So we're nine months into the year and we can call this before CCM because this is up to the point of our old internal management. CCM, you know, they came in October the first. So this is really the old management that we're talking about. And, you know, quite honestly, I'm disappointed with our year-to-date results. And, you know, my gut is, it's really, it's unacceptable. Why? Well, there's a number of reasons, you know. We're $278,000 over budget year-to-date. And if you just look at the expenses, we're $331,000 overspent on expenses. And that's atrocious. And why is that? Well, there's really four main reasons. Number one, the budget that was built last year wasn't the best budget. There were some deficiencies in that budget. The second thing is, you know, it's a fact that our buildings are getting older and, you know, contingencies were not built in to the budget last year. The third reason is, you know, we, as in the board, consciously made a decision to spend some extra money. And a case in point of that would be the hurricane tree trimming. It wasn't in the budget, but it was a good conscious decision to do that. And the fourth item, and I think is the most serious one, is that we haven't been managing this property properly. Lack of, we've had lack of controls and proper follow-up. And that's a recipe for disaster. So, you know, you look what's happened. Our cash position continues to erode each month because we're spending more money than what we're bringing in for maintenance fees. I don't know how many of you have my report, there is a copy up here, but I'm just following my report. Our cash now is down to about $587,000. We've overspent by almost $300,000. We started the year with about $1 million. So, you know, when you spend more than what you bring in, our cash position drops. I always said that we should have one to four months of cash in the bank. We spend of our cash, of our expenses in the bank. We spend about $300,000 a month. So we've got just under $600,000, which is two months. I'm not overly concerned. I'm concerned about the trend because it has been, you know, we've been spending too much. But we still have enough cash. It's not as if we're close to bankruptcy or anything. So we've got almost two months of cash expenses in the bank, which is still good. I'm comfortable with that. And in fact, I'd be comfortable so long as we stay over the $400,000 mark. But that's still, that's still important that we get a grip on what's going on here. And I really have to commend the board for the action that they've taken because it was a big step to put in new management here. And we now have professional management and we've got some high expectations, Nancy and Marlene. But it's not too late and I'm very pleased with the changes that I've seen to date. So that's really, you know, of the assets, cash is the key. Our equity is about $687,000. We were close to $1 million at the beginning of the year and that's eroded down to just over, just under $700,000 now, which it's not a good trend and we don't want to see that continue. We don't want to continue to see erosion of our equity. Looking at our expenses and revenues, we've got a favorable variance of about $53,000 on the revenue side. And as I mentioned earlier, our expenses were off. We've actually overspent by $331,500. So let's look at where the majority of these variances are. Total income, thank goodness, we had a favorable variance on the revenue line of about $53,000. I found in the September results, another $10,000 that Campbell made some errors. They have not been very cooperative with us. So, you know, we decided just to delete that and we'll correct that in October. So we've got about $10,000 of positive coming through in October, which is good for us. Under general and administrative expenses, we're better than budget by about $26,000. There are some overs and unders within that category and we need to keep an eye on legal fees and miscellaneous expenses. But I'm not really overly concerned in that area. Our utilities, we're about worse than budget by $21,000. The water and sewer is about $31,000 unfavorable. The water report has been done and within that water report, we have 10 recommendations that we made to the board. And I think the sooner that we can take action and implement some of those recommendations, the sooner we can perhaps start reducing our costs in that area. Total contracts are worse than budget by about $54,000. New management, that team will be looking into that, into all these items. So I'm not too concerned about that either. But the killer category is maintenance. We are worse than budget by $188,000 year-to-date. And, you know, our buildings, you know, the age of them, it's a fact of life that we have to deal with. And what you're going to get is, you know, unforeseen expenses. But, you know, that's something that we need to keep in front of us and make sure we've got a contingency in our budgets going forward. But poor controls over expenses and inventory are not a fact of life. And CCM, they're on this to correct it and to get things under control. And believe me, it's something that we really need to be focused on and get this thing under control. And our salaries, September, I think, was the, we were almost break-even to budget for, in September. So that's tremendous. Year-to-date, though, we're worse off by about $90,000. And most of that was overtime and overtime not being managed properly. And that's one of the best things about contracting out because then all of a sudden, overtime isn't our issue, it's the company's issue. So... So we're looking forward to, you know, not enduring some of these terrible unfavorable variances that we've had in the past. Key performance indicators, our owner arrears greater than a one hundred dollars, it slipped a little bit in August and September, but our old management really didn't manage collections that closely. Marlene and Nancy, they're going to be monitoring...